This conference will now be recorded.
Flight, thank you everyone for coming this evening to the city council meeting and if you all join me in the flight of allegiance, please prevent standing for our information this evening brought by the passengers. I would like to be more loud. Please prepare. If you would be able to stand. My name is. You're responsible for the city and justice for all. It's a deal of kindness, the basic personnel, not just. We didn't go right to the weather. And each near one of those families filed a thousand and a thousand. Who will we send one of those families to? And we had to report with. Truth is, not the city, the city council meeting, no benefit of the citizen. Off springs. It's getting a little clean hearted and restricted in the season of the wind. That's all of his use language for it. Amen. And it's the open dump hole. This is confirmed that I am not on my agenda. Sir, can you mind? Can you address the city council that I am not on my agenda? You're welcome to. Done. Okay, well, keep on going there. Move right along to the consent agenda. Consent agenda this evening includes the minutes from the February 2021 city council meeting. Plans for city operations, plans for public health, mental health operations. I will. Intercept them. Second. Anything to be told?
I didn't look down. It's not the order, you know.
Uh, no questions concerns comments from the rest of the panel? None? No questions?
Wood?
Yes.
Mackey? Reeves?
Sure. Yes.
Stevens?
President, yes.
Foxon?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
More confesses.
On to the party business, which the first item is the aquatic car suspension replacement.
Good evening, everybody. The council, the chief of management member has invited for you, um, the request to accept the Titan West Fork pools for the aquatic filter replacement, um, and twelve hundred fifteen thousand and ninety dollars. Um, this product was registered back in December, um, originally. Uh, Bogle did a thing back in December or over budget, which we did a check for the bid. Um, we drew the hours in late January. We had one, uh, one that came back this round, we could have looked at some rest for our pools. Um, we will need to do a budget amendment for this year, uh, as this project was originally funded for originally.
We did. Thank you. Uh, anything from the citizens, questions, concerns, comments? Liz Scott? Any other thing about?
Mr. Mayor, I have the motion to accept the business of West Fork Pools Incorporated for a hundred fifteen thousand dollars.
Second. So moved by this for Thompson and seconded by Mr. Shannon. Uh, questions, concerns, comments, we'll start here with Mr. Reeves.
You know, they mentioned about the re, you know, reworking the placement of it. Because the problem was. It was clearly being done with it.
No, um, we moved the position of the filter because of the size of the filter. And so that's hard to affect. And so that probably in the end, it's a little bit be assisted, maybe lower than what Eric originally was back in December.
I just wanted to know whether we decide to reduce the thickness or.
Was there any reason on that?
They're extremely busy, they're just direct.
They are. Last time, when we rejected this last time, um, one contractor, one of the two, one that did not fit on this, and they just say that they aren't for these laws. And they may already not fit on the next ones.
Word is being. Very helpful.
What's word is their.
Who does maybe our feelings were opening up this time? We did. Other questions, concerns, comments, okay.
Mackey?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Hip?
Yes.
Foxon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Burley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
There you go. One way to jump in and. On that, we're going to continue with the fire EMS building contract.
First thing I'm going to take with the. Uh, first, uh, what's for a student board with an EMSS, uh, plus a company contract? I want to execute lots of things. Personal funds are going, how they recommend, overall, so that I can. Um, I've gone through specific steps that are going to handle the next kind of big issue. Probably have to do with. Seeing a lot of inefficiencies and steps that have been dated for that, so there's some opportunity to really reduce the workload and help us and the city as well as lower that fee. Uh, so what commission is working, so that we can get. Uh, the four, uh, which is for to pursue that contract. In what ways are things fully detailed up? Is there a detailed process that's in that, something that finance the city? But we need to work through the actual steps of that in front of the contract, or the same details in terms of how things are reported and will change. With all some of those issues.
Good. Any other staff? Citizens, questions, concerns? None, I think they pulled the motion.
Mr. Mayor, motion to offer a fire staff to establish fire recovery. That's our hierarchy of MS building.
So moved by the three and seconded by Mr. Mackey. Questions, concerns, comments, and we'll start here with.
Three real.
That is an incredible point. What the detail in that.
I'll wait for make up associate supplemental information to base the data. True.
You'll be known for that a lot more. If you know any questions, concerns, comments.
Now, motion operating staff to pursue the fire recoveries or fire EMS building. Wood?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yeah.
Burley?
Yeah.
Foxon?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Hip?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Again, thank you. Moving on to number three, I've identified ice plate reer A F P R.
Good evening, everybody. That was actually. That's definitely a plus, right? Um, I'm here tonight to ask for, uh, the reallocation fund that we've gotten back for. Which is actually a few bad. E R S. Um, and have they allocated to purposes in the. The advanced bicycle reer system, the A L P R. Um, prior to starting the topic here, we've been researching, looking at gaining assistance for our APLR for multiple different reasons. Um, to assist us in investigations, to assist us in locating stolen cars, stolen iceland. Missing people, people that are, you know, anger alerts, silver alerts, all those types of deals. You can't see that yet, there's two different systems that are predominantly used currently. We're on the GenTech system and we're on the else access system, which is one that we're requesting. The difference, many different emergency systems, both of them are extremely good systems, both of them work. Made for what they need. There's one system, the independent system, which is the GenTech system, where we purchase that system, we have that system, we control the depth that's within it. And we use the depth ourselves. There's really no fraud share unless we were to reach out to another agency, like, hey, you don't even buy this system, you don't even buy that system. And then we can share that. The else that system has been, is accepting time to immerse different nation-wide databases. That would help us assist us in, uh, not hot corporate investigation and a bunch of other things. High demand, those types of things, which is unfortunately one thing that I said to the other person is. High, I don't know, tracking, putting through their case, and it also will involve me and pass or something like that. So you have your work with else exits into that. Type, it's called the idle server. Yeah, there's the high frequency drug tracking areas, it's a nation-wide system. Um, everybody that works within that system feeds information, data into that system, we can pull out and also. We would have alerts to things that are going through our area, that would generally wouldn't happen. The system will also kind of give us total investigations, immediately the car stolen, we can put the information into the system and immediately it starts looking for those types of vehicles. So an officer is trying to, we thought, pointed to a type of stolen vehicle. He's looking at different trackers, things like that, we can drive by, this type of system sees a lot more. You can't see what made that, it's thousands of that place. Per minute, per second, I guess, make you have. This one system can replace what. Unguardable amounts of officers, it would take to do the same. Um, and it's also a, let's say, project, things like that. Identifying potential issues, but becoming issues, knowing if there's something, if somebody, if your vehicle or not, that doesn't need to be in those types of documents. Um, because of the loss of key vehicles, at minimum. We will be receiving. Thirty-four thousand dollars after those vehicles, um, so we're still waiting to see a little bit of work in the background. Based on putting across some things like that that we've seen it, but at minimum, it's thirty-four thousand. This system itself is going to cost us twenty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. That also includes the cost of the system, the cost of the install, the cost of all the software and everything that goes along with it. And it also includes free addition of your warranty and pocket list, so if anything happens, camera, everything, have the company that services them, hold them off, replaces them, takes care of them all for us. And additional costs, although they're paid for the years of warranty. And then after that, the system belongs to us, and we want you to take care of the rest of the system.
Do you have any questions? Well, we could. We deserve to not ask those questions. That's all. Any other staff? Presentation input? None? Any citizens, questions, concerns? None?
Mr. Mayor, take a moment. We follow by staff and purchase the A L, that's teaching the F P L system for push decisions. Along with the addition of three-year warranty service, we have statute, see, twenty-five thousand dollars.
All second?
So moved by Mr. Shannon and seconded by Mr. Burley. We'll all go ahead and start and play.
The two vehicles or two vehicles were taken out of service, but don't need to be replaced, we just keep vehicles in service longer.
We are, we are in the schedule and headed to capital. Two vehicles for this year anyway. We can't afford thirty-four dollars, I'll just purchase the vehicle and then I'll pick those vehicles and do all those things like that. So we're sticking to vehicles that are being purchased with capital area. We were supposed to increase our fleet slightly this year, however, not pretty soon is where we're going to be at. Our fleet's functional, um, the newer vehicles, our firm maintenance plan, um, all those things have been helping total our fleet, not making much help here. So it's kind of those negative things, total of harm always getting way short, especially if you start kind of on the. Their advice. One of them was almost, it's like, one of them was after the flash that the N P R calls, and I think that person. Insurance just costs a lot over the two places.
Is one of these units, which is part of our contract, are really considered as a part?
One of them will start to get it deployed out in the, in our community, if the officers using it, running out of function with it. Um, and then depending on how well it operates and how well the officers keep going with it, it could be a potential for getting either fixed units or rolling units or. There's different ways of deploying this other than the type of vehicle. This will be on the base unit, so it can be out more predominantly, but there is always probably going to be the need for more, especially if we get larger in the city, the larger community. More traffic coming through.
As far as providing shared vehicles over in town, it's often the.
Correct, yeah, that's true.
But the armory, most of the time.
Generally, in a previous agency that I worked for, we initiated the L P R system. We placed on a vehicle, and that vehicle will be driven more than any other vehicle out there, so that the system doesn't be used, so that we can't collect that data. That truly negative effect.
Thank you for the voice of excellence. Glad to see you before. If you worry that it possibly be terrible, so you future. That's for discrimination, it's for legalized.
Well, we'll keep that in mind. So you can go on.
Uh, that's all. And, uh, thank you. I think, one question. It's bothered to do that to Burley, and that is, it is a fixed unit in that vehicle, it's not a portal.
Correct. There's, there's three cameras that are placed on the roof and the control part for a rear event. Um, two cameras on one side, one on the other, um, in the position in a way that it feels like some, most amount of that is a vehicle that is driving. That the only part of the side of the road that can be parked left, and it's a lot more effective. We also often use units in. The type of setting where you can maybe display a sign or whatever. You know, you can position that, but you would have to move that up a ton. Yeah, they also have another fixed to location on the road.
And then the unit itself for students, doesn't need to be next to all the time. You download, you have a one, when you have, when you have all the, but license plate should be there.
Yes, what is, the system works is, there's two components, one, all our vehicles can make it live through cellular. All the time. Every time an officer logs into the system, at least once a day, unless you actually do it more, it sends the data from the bar to the cloud service that else that provide. And it takes everything from else that we're allowed to get and bring them into the phone. And into the computer, but it's right off the software on the laptop.
Right, 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 right. So what are the, what do you have?
No, it actually would be lost the system's cell function.
Does this unit just read the license plate or it's read the.
So the way the system works is it reads the license plate. The numbers that are associated, you can read street signs, the driver by, you can read everything that goes by that. Display some sort of number, you can even go by a page, it's going to read that as one, 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 one. It says, I'm going to find the officer, when the alarm would go off, say, license plate one two three A B C is stolen, or stolen car. But that's stolen out of Utah. But Kansas license plate one two three A B C shows up, it comes in, it's going to show the alarm on the computer, it's going to say, what I say, Utah license plate one two three A B C. They're going to look at the picture, look at the tag that it actually took, and it'll display it there, and you go, that's a Kansas tag, not a Utah tag. And then say, ignore, it's not an appropriate policy. But if they look down on the picture, matches what the tab is, they see the vehicle, and then it's.
See the point?
Yes. Yeah, it does, and actually, it's the place deployed there, it's kind of maybe a little out of order, so with the position angle, it rarely never sees a plate that's writing under the road. In either direction, to read the place, I believe, it's up to the center. Ninety or a hundred.
Well, final call, is it? Really, there's a limit to make because I was like, well, you pick up a signal or something from. You have to do something. And you could tell, cars not facing straight, you know. Doesn't do that.
Yeah.
Um. It spoke to this one car. Now, but do you remember that car, how much is it like, fault or tape? Put it on a different car?
Uh, I would have to ask some company later, because we, generally, part of the, so once this car's included on our, we got part forty-seven. The next year, part forty-seven, time for that to leave. The installation and removal effects, both of the. Purchasing parts, apparently, so I hear a lot of details. Are given this year, there's an installation of rack process incorporated into that. And then that can be just the actual part, they don't charge us for individual things, it's just like, okay, a million car, good, it's eighteen hundred bucks. That goes to the rack out, and the part takes about two weeks to do that. That would have been another part, they take off old car, and they use a new car. And if it probably get wrecked, correct? That's what we've had recently seen part. That would just be awesome to be, so it shouldn't be that. Um, it takes maybe a day, eight hours to install, install these systems, so that could be a tough part.
Okay. Let me be terminal, I would make it. Disconnect the thing. Okay, yeah.
The hard thing with this, which hard to convert a property on time for this, is this just takes pictures.
Oh, okay.
Picture, the software itself is going in, and the millisecond it takes to go, whatever it is, direct, and all that. It's, I would really, I mean, you have much of a license plate, they're taking off, or they're going to cover it with something. In a manner, he did, he did. But like, somebody tried to come up with officers, and they have to randomly, you know, license plate, that's all the attention to. So hopefully, they get stopped from that. But it, I mean, it plays, and it even picks up the, pick the fact, so it's harder than. Any old thing, it's not see it, because you can see it. Really crazy.
The question is, is that what you're saying, and it was further along?
Not why. I don't have such system now, technology, but I know it's like getting basically. There's, uh, you may have already said that, I mean, there's also. So. I'm not a hundred percent sure which Casey K system is on, I know Casey though, the other system that they have probably been using themselves. There are Kansas Highway Control, there's a lot of county agencies that are on the outside system. I'm not a hundred percent sure of Casey K. Or what they, because I mean, other kinds of systems. So a lot of the areas, a lot of the other areas, where you should have our control, Johnson Academy. Yeah, and a lot of, I mean, when they cross that border, which are. When you talk of the stolen cars, the camera alerts, silver alerts, stolen tag, missing people, healthcare checks, that stuff. That's something that's shared across all the systems, because that, that is owned by the state of Kansas, the state of Missouri. Um, the different things of K O, it's always a different thing. That feeds the whole system. It's the, that's the database that's kind of east, outside, whatever, the tech. It's that kind. So they, they all meet here in that essence, like, if we had somebody, if we had like, you know. Then that could put in the system, that could be all the other systems, that could be across all of that. That could, that needs, that's a, a unique solution. This is, I mean, it's my understanding, Casey K does all the. They find it, Casey K does all the. They're kind of. Yes. This is the normal unit, it's not harder, and the people that are part of the seven, two, two bodies. Then, you know, we read everything that comes in, you know, we were part of the state, I'm, we were part of, we were part of somewhere, the part of, then it was a stationary system. And it can be the same on tap, same speed, and that would give an option to say, pardon. You know, like, for something. So from the client sees it, in part, officers know about. How long? Those. So they're still looking at that from the. Car, you know, way into the venue or whatever. Yeah, they have, they would probably, like, be slowly watching it. Yeah. It's under our pocket that. As a. It's a part of the. This car, I think, so really, I mean, probably send away the car, or if it's not too long, it would key off or you got off that line. They would, they would key up, I would. If you don't have a club, then it's season, it's. What? That's pretty quick. What, what are the. I don't know. Actually, why do they go back? You know, like, nine, seven. Those. Like, maybe your parts.
Very good. There are going to be restrictions on how to say yes. Hold through.
Yes.
I also say yes. Of an active cycle of use of.
Grabbing food system, or achieving to get. Then, there is a problem, it's actually. Last time, I worked with this system, the model of the car, but I have the laptop, and you could, your laptop, I mean, you know, put on a particular software. She usually pictures the car, pictures the plate, pictures what's called on the mark, that's what the officer, that's the game, second, so we'll get it, you know. Yes, this is an actual deal one, we're starting to. Yes, and we crack down. Play as a match, you got that. All of that, trying to come in place to make it legal for us to stop. Excuse me, for that, we have to be on fire system. Why is that? The officer has, has the physical check, the passing down, it's not just the line you're talking about. You've got to check. Whether the, yeah, distance. But this can pick up. If they were, like, questions. Generally, it's within about ten feet of it, and that all depends on. If you go up, if I'm not on the side of the case, I. I do this. Okay. And then, obviously, there's regulations, so, certain that, however, for most parts. Only. Where? What can I do?
My question.
You can. Yes.
Does the first price include training the officer, does it go all off?
They, they will provide training to the system. Um, I agree to this specific system before another, they will, they'll come, pushing the judge, it will come out. Train one person to train anybody, or train a group of officers, if you have any problems, luckily, they can make. But yeah, they provide, you know, individual work through the. Something.
Any other questions? Since we, you know, reside from such a high, for, is there a preferable? For the system?
Certainly, that's. Shits can sell well. There is, one of you will be, was able to see the air. I got a email this past week, there's five.
Any other questions? Anything?
But in other motion to offer a stack for purchase of outside A P L R system, conditions that you. One will be use of a period warranty service, so costs half the three point five thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. Thompson?
Yes.
Burley?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Hip?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes. Motion passes.
Good. My thought, for this evening, will be, uh, water treatment facility phase one.
We have, but it works the right way. What we, that's like, kind of, a milestone, I guess, in initiation of the water treatment lab project. And the first phase base has been prepared and negotiated. It includes detailed survey information, detailed geotechnics. That guarantee not to exceed price for completion of construction project, which could be phased if, if we all decide for sure. Uh, completion phase one, the city also has no obligation to proceed any further. If they do not like, guarantee maximum price, nor clear obligation to proceed with that specific contractor. So phase one is a pretty isolated phase, that gives the city quite a few options. Uh, but the compensation amount is seven hundred ninety-five thousand one hundred fifteen dollars. Select contractor is a Crossland Hating Contractor, and they're a team of Black Beach consultants. By the way, the project has been requested through K D H G, the Savior Albany Fund, which was approved by council at the last meeting, and submitted by staff, but not a take sixty to ninety days of process. In the meantime, there's a, you know, funding that's going to be there for this, through the water plant. Uh, I'm not sure if anything else, that's a pretty broad oversight, but it's a big number, so. Uh, I, I have a few questions.
Very good, thank you. Anything else from the staff? Does this place concern Congress? Saying none, I understand the motive, this mayor, point where, strictly mine. I will entertain the motive.
This mayor being opposed to approve and authorize the mayor to design the phase one agreement with Crossland Hating Contractors in the amount of seven hundred ninety-five thousand one hundred fifteen dollars for initial project planning work for the water treatment facility project, subject to K D H G review and approval.
The move by Mr. Reeves and Senator Stevens, what?
It was incredible, unless there was, um, contract and anti-discrimination thing. Like, I'm reading through it suddenly, and these letters, and I can just, oh, and then, uh, yeah, employee rights, I, I think that's so. And I learned a new word, resistive. On page two twenty-two. Much, much, well, yeah. Well, I, we, 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 sorry.
Well, in, well, I, it's just two different definitions, so I assume they're talking about soil mechanics, or things from the geotechnical. But, but, yeah, I'm just, I'm very hard to believe, I'm afraid, and right, for, for that. Oh, you, please, okay. I will say that, I think, just a contract portion is about a hundred and one pages. Thirty-one pages of that, I believe, are K D H G and S R F law requirements. And there's about five pages or six that I segregated off, uh, as part of the package. That really doesn't mean to say it's, it's like, six pages, not a.
Sure, don't be going back.
No, so, resistive.
Uh, not that we want to move away from Black Beach, but, um, part, I think, yeah, with the Black Beach, it's all. But, uh, the, do they hold the lights, anything they could visit regards to this far, it's an arse of some of the features, aside from, you know, somebody else's, amazing project.
It is, yeah, but very specifically.
Okay. Uh, I'm.
The fact is that the review from three of the specialized inside contracts. That's one of the driving factors that they were supposed to be really for. Sure. We got some value in it as we could. They didn't do it.
Phase one, this will be. Hard for this to be what. Pays our. Project plan.
No. Our our overrepresented. It's a separate matter. But that funding is also talented to the S R.
Any other questions? Anything? Vote please.
Voting on a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the phase one agreement with custom hitting contractors. In the amount of seven hundred ninety five thousand one hundred fifteen dollars. For the initial project planning work for the water treatment facility project subject to K D H G review and approval. Burden? Reese? Dan? Compton? Wood? Stevens? Dick? Motion passes.
Very good. Thank you. Getting away. Off to our reports. The first question to our city management report. Just a few quick updates. Just wanna. Already. State Kansas has moved into vaccinated sixty five years or older. They are doing that. Based off of zip codes at this point in time. But please haven't already signed up through the E B public health department that came in this forum. I link that in my report. And we also have it on our website. But that would keep you informed as they work through that process for vaccination. With credit to the state of Kansas did, and there was five misses. Even about eighteen thousand additional dollars to be used for its. Screening infrastructure system data programs actually comes from the air act money that they received. So that's what that says directly eighteen thousand. There's some other components of that, but that's still getting flushed out. Probably goes without saying, if you've driven down Middleton, but. When it goes from negative twenty to sixty degrees, that probably has an impact on our infrastructure. So we are dealing with water main breaks throughout the community. I could say throughout, but we're there. But please, those things, move pressure. Please let us know so we can get out there and fix that. Same goes with potholes. You have, again, that's free thaw cycles. That's when you start to have potholes. So again, please report those so that we can address those as quickly as possible. But excuse me. And then last but not least, several of you have seen, but I pointed out for everybody that there are several photos that are lining up against the wall here. I do my thing just seeing first staff. They will diligently put those things together. Friends, we're doing that this morning. So when that comes down on that, and those will actually be showcased in the new city hall as we start to transition to that facility. One thing in particular that I think is pretty. Not sure what the right word is. Miss Wood might have to. For the city band going up from nine to the base of the show. Band will be the Western Conference. Again, showcasing the street on stream. A lot of different activities and places seen throughout the community. So we'll be looking to include additional ones, additional photos with this different glimpse. Have a little showcase in that remarkable facility. And it is coming along very well. Quick update on that. The former odd coring gymnasium area is almost done. They're putting some acoustic paneling, things like that in there. But flooring is more basically done, same all it. You've been inside this facility over last week. Tell it to smell. All your things back for classes. But again, it's it's come a long break. We're hopeful to get in there in the next, oh, probably within the next couple of months. We're marketing timeframe. So again, exciting things going on in the city special government. That's all I have. Thank you, sir.
I'm the city council item. And I'm a part of the committee. Glad to be here. Not old, but they just two of those. They're moving forward for that. With our water plant. We're like. And so I just. I was gonna ask what you think what's going. What's the mayor's view?
Uh, one of the work on. I have a few things I can add tonight of savings and things. Swizzled dollars of breaking stuff. Fiscally, they're doing a billion. Service that's the end use fee. Three hundred sixty five million here. H twenty one million taxpayer. Making interest of fifteen thousand dollars per taxpayer. So reason I'm putting that staff. Staying on top of fiscal responsibility, this field will come to buildings and tremendous buildings and water. People must start moving. But if that thing. Well, in the first show. I think the constituents. But they will build their community on this. People will stay anywhere in the city. Nobody's watching. It's not a party area. It's gonna come to us. Appreciate all of your. For being with me and being as clever. Other than that, thank you for all of you.
On the right foot, make hundred thirty three street. That on, we will afford or is that that on? How many comments?
Thank you for the question. I believe you're doing that. We're fortunate.
Yep.
So where? Technically, it is. We should, it's the same kind of argument that we get in sidewalks and shuttling. Really be assessment of fixing sidewalks. Kind of put it in a different perspective. A lot of that area agriculture, however, so what happens is that when you get into agriculture, you sell a property that starts to change. The maintenance responsibilities along the highway. Typically, agriculture, you're only required to maintain the area. Remember the general branders, so pretty much just around the main primary structure. Okay. So that changed that state law. So once you get into a residential zone house, you have a big overhanging tree. That would be a different scenario.
Thanks, Stan. There was a lot of sleep more much. So that. It really. But thank you for the staff and all of which you had to. Prebrewed. Stan and Reese.
I was there. First of all, I missed it last week. But I wanted to. I have a statement. Here in Florida, as long as we. But it's here. The big company here, I was on a trip with family. They were a rag on her. It was pretty impressive that they. I don't know how, heard of us, what we were doing. And. Managed several states with it. It's blasted off. Enough building on it. And I said. Maybe four. But this council has done, and our staff have a great thing. So I just wanted to say thank you for all people here as well as our staff. It's pretty awesome to be in our field right. There is a lot of water. I want to say thanks to the community for allowing me to be able to get the vaccine shot. I've been honored to my president, president of all have also received it. One for their Father's Day school, which another Father's Day. My attention, Casey Starber, the first community to have a lot of teachers vaccinated. They're one of those three cool opportunity because that was a bracket point of honor. We're diligent with the building and we're trying to protect everybody that we can. That's the end of my time. Thank you.
I'm still very impressed with. Our police, ambulance, public works. I I was so impressed with the way they can care about. And the weather and the way they endure as we all know in certain. But they honestly, I think. So we're really pleased to hear. How's that answer? You shouldn't call. All of staff would start now. To be very interested. That's it. You guys. So onto the mayor's report items. First off, I would, this is a pothole season, as was referenced earlier. So please, everyone who's heard of those that will complain to all of us. And I thank you as well to notify those involved where those potholes are. So maybe only three or four people get them instead of three or four hundred people. And there is a pothole that are large at a hundred and thirty if the case that I will write on the quick on the turning line. But that's traumatic or collapse. The brutally cold weather that we had was, we suffered through, but not near. What impacted is near is a lot of other communities. Well, that's a testament to our wonderful public safety, public works. Plan that we have ahead of time and the way our staff is administrated. So, yeah, it was cold, but it was near as impactful. Plan for these type of things in the future were right in the middle of this. You're. I did have a talk to you meet with. We were going to meet with both. Mayor McTaggart and Mayor Albee last Friday. However, your out test. For COVID at the last minute. Unfortunately, he turned up and ended and everything's fine. But in an abundance of caution, I encourage everyone who may get up with normal colds and sniffles and fevers. If you have any questions at all, please have yourself tested. Testing is free and easy through the public health department. And then it's. And you can have huge likelihood results back for this. His results were back within fourteen hours. Also, I had a conference or last meeting to join in a meeting with the. Y dot Johnson County Mayor's Association. All of us are having a very similar situation. We're moving through them as best we can. Now it's not the time to let down our fences across the whole community of Y dot Johnson County. We need to still stay vigilant. Encourage the mask wearing and social distancing as possible. Our Y dot county, as other parts of the community has already changed, our restrictions will be changing. I don't know exactly when and exactly the when, but be prepared for that. It will be quite some time until we're back to normal. However, it it will get closer and closer than it's. Kudos to the public works department for the snow removal that they did. So I had a couple of individuals compliment me on the snow removal. This was while the snow was on for him. They had one call and said that they had driven through Lawrence and Thomas and Bonner Springs. And Bonner Springs won. So. That was a direct comparison by a person who does not live in Bonner Springs. So they they were very appreciative. I did notice the preparation which you took ahead of time caused us to be prepared for when that sun finally did break out. It was, there's another hour that didn't happen in the streets. It broke apart marketing. So thank you for all that you did. We have to put a lot of material on the road to be prepared for that. And it's below zero, none of the materials as well as what we like. So. The development that's coming to Bonner Springs has been a long time coming. We have to, a state of course, is a game of patience. These things are starting to improve. Like you may mention, not only do we have to be conservative, conservative in our spending, we have to be conservative in our. Consent. This is a program that we have to be not an industry leader and not an industry loser. We have to do what's appropriate across the whole community. We're not just competing with Johnson County. Communities or Missouri communities. We're we're competing directly with. The whole country is expected to be there. So as far as incentives for these programs that we have going on. Especially with Old Dominion. We need to be at the top of our game. And we have the professional staff that is doing it. So I didn't say enough about it. Very proud of it, but it's it's not a short game, a long game, so we have to stay with it. It's good to see those things finally happen. As well as the programs we're doing, the investment in the downtown core area, the police department, the hall, and now the water facility. Will continue to be able to be proud of Bonner Springs for generations. Other than that, I stand for questions. Anyone have any questions? Excellent. We're a gentleman.